Good evening and welcome. My name is Ben Geiger and I will be the moderator for tonight's West St. Paul War II Candidate Forum. This forum is sponsored by WOW, Women of West St. Paul, NROCK, Residents of Color Collective, and the West St. Paul Greenway Coalition. The purpose of these forums is to provide a platform for West St. Paul citizens to ask questions to candidates running for office in West St. Paul for the purpose of having an informed electorate. The sponsors feel this is vitally important every election year. The West St. Paul candidate forums are our first of many efforts to make the government more accessible to West St. Paul residents. It is often hard to find information on local candidates and even the most beautiful campaign literature cannot tell us the whole story. This forum offers an opportunity for us to learn more about the candidates, their policies, and their opinions about local issues. I'm going to give a brief overview of the forum's structure for the benefit of both the candidates and the audience. To all those in attendance tonight, I want to thank you for taking time to learn more about Ward II candidates. I want to remind you that we are all here to listen to what candidates have to say. Everyone on the Zoom call except myself and the candidates have been placed on mute. If you have a question, you may post it in the chat. Both the Zoom chat and the Facebook chat will be monitored throughout the forum. There will be 15 minutes towards the end of the forum where candidates will be asked questions from these chats. We would like to thank Tori Elsmore for lending her expertise in making this Zoom platform work. Thanks, Tori. Candidates, we ask that you respect one another, do not crosstalk or interrupt one another when a person is talking. Tonight, you will be asked several questions which represent a variety of topics that are of interest to the citizens of our city. All questions were submitted by residents. The format of the forum, screening questions, and the guidelines have been guided from the League of Women Voters' recommendation. I will read the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. You are not required to use all of the time. After both candidates have responded, there will be an opportunity to offer a one-minute rebuttal response. Tori Elsmore is our timekeeper. She will provide signs when you have 1 minute 30 seconds left. When you've reached your two minutes, she will hold up a stop sign. You are asked to finish your sentence at that time, so we may move on to the next candidate or question. With each question, we will rotate the person who responds first. If a candidate continues to talk, I have the option to mute you. Candidates will also be given two minutes to make opening statements and three minutes to make closing statements if time allows. The candidates for the War II race in alphabetical order are Anthony Fernandez and Robin Gully. All of the candidates have been sent the same material and invitation for tonight's forum. We appreciate their willingness to participate. Thank you for coming. Thank you for caring about your local government and wanting to learn more about the candidates. Let's begin with opening statements. Mr. Fernandez, I turn it over to you for your opening two-minute remarks.
Thank you very much. My name is Anthony Fernandez. I'm the current city council member representing Ward II. I am running for reelection to keep the momentum in the city moving forward. We have a lot of great things that we've been working on recently and we want to make sure that we keep the momentum moving forward. I feel that I provide a unique perspective to the city, being that I've served on the Planning Commission and four years on the City Council. Previously, I served on a planning commission in the city of St. Paul and also ran a district council, the Frog Town Neighborhood Association, for a few years as well. So you can check out all of the things that I'm not speaking on specifically tonight here on my website, which is votefernandezwsp.com. Also, votefernandez.com will get you there. I asked for your vote either now or November 3rd, and it's been a pleasure serving the city for the past almost four years now. And thank you for putting on this forum, and I look forward to speaking about some of the things that I'd like to get accomplished in the next four years and what Ms. Gully has in mind as well.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying thank you so much to Tori, to Ben, to the Women of West St. Paul, to the Residents of Color Collective, and to the West St. Paul Greenway Coalition, and also to the League of Women Voters for helping to put together all these tools that make it easier for us to have these citywide forums. My name is Robin Gully. I'm, of course, running for West St. Paul City Council in Ward II. I'm a mom of four girls and we love living in West St. Paul. I feel lucky every day to be raising my kids here. We have a fantastic community and so much of what we need is right here in our community, which is amazing. In my work, I'm a professor of leadership at Metro State University, and I also run in Brookwood Labor College, where we educate workers into the labor movement and try to create new organizers. I'm a proud member of the inner faculty organization at Metro State University, where I'm on the statewide bargaining committee. We're a union family and we believe that strong workers make strong communities. I'm excited to bring that experience to West St. Paul. I've also earned a master's degree in public policy from the University of Minnesota, an MA in human rights from Central European University, and I'm starting a doctorate in education at Hamline University. I worked on statewide initiatives, including marriage equality and raising wages for home care workers, which has helped countless seniors and folks with disabilities stay in their home and stay active in our community. And I'll bring all of this experience to the West St. Paul City Council, leading with honesty, openness, and transparency, and trying to make our great community even better. So, thank you, and I would appreciate your vote. You can check out more about me at robinforwsp.com, or you can call me anytime, 612-558-6019. That's on my website too, but I will also put it in the chat. Thanks so much.
Thank you both for those opening remarks. We're going to move on to the question portion of the forum. So, Ms. Gully, you're going to have the first crack at the first question. So the question is, what prompted you to run for West St. Paul City Council?
So, I have been an organizer for a long time, and like I said, I teach leadership at Metro State University. I decided to run for city council actually because of the Dominion Development Project. I learned that our current city council, including the council member that I'm running against Fernandez, were supporting repealing our prevailing wage ordinance here in West St. Paul. Now, I will say that Councilmember Fernandez voted in favor of protecting our prevailing wage ordinance, but I was not at all confident that he would continue to do that. And like I said, I believe that strong workers make strong communities. And in this moment, in particular with the COVID pandemic, the last thing we need is to roll back worker protections. Over time, though, I realized that I could do a lot of good for our community. I have a long history of community organizing and engagement, and I wanted to bring that to the city of West St. Paul and work to engage all kinds of different stakeholders and important issues. So, that's what made me decide to run for city council.
Mr. Fernandez, same question for you. What prompted you to run for West St. Paul City Council?
Initially, when I started to run was because I felt that there was so much opportunity that the city needed to embrace and needed to move forward. I continue to run for projects like Dominion because of the fact that it's suiting not only jobs, I'm glad to hear that Robin is for jobs, that's great. We're providing a lot of jobs coming up with this project, and we're also providing affordable housing, which is a very important issue and extremely important to myself. So I continue to champion projects like that, and I will champion those projects all day long. Now, I'll continue to create more of those projects. We, as a city, will continue to create more of those projects. So, that's what keeps me going. There's also a connectivity issue within this city that we need to address. A lot of the stuff just doesn't, it doesn't connect to one another. We're talking about paths and sidewalks and roads that need to start to connect together better. You know, first ring suburbs are kind of really the new spot for urban planning and to get the right things together. We're seeing, we're going to see a pretty large population boom coming over the next couple of years with some of these projects that I've been a part of, and we need to make some of the other areas around them work. So, that's why.
Robin, you've got one minute for any follow-up comments.
No, I just want to say that I think, you know, I think it's good that we both have positions that we believe in, and, you know, we just fundamentally disagree on how this is going to affect our community. I have spent the last few months talking to community members all over Ward II, and what I hear is that they haven't felt hurt on this project. But, you know, I will stand by my guns, and I'm excited to bring that to the West St. Paul City Council.
Anthony, your chance for a rebuttal, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got a notification that popped up for muted. You know, my rebuttal is that the project is happening. And again, it's a huge project for a lot of families, a lot of senior citizens. Affordable housing for senior citizens is one of the largest growing segments around the country, not just in West St. Paul. So, it's unfortunate to hear that Robin is against that, but, you know, maybe she wins and she's at the groundbreaking. So, there you go.
We'll move on to our second question. So, Mr. Fernandez, we'll start with you. Here's the second question. Tax increment financing, or TIF, has been a controversial topic in the city of late. What criteria would or do you use to determine if it's appropriate to grant a project? And how would this affect your decision on future developments?
Absolutely. Let's do a quick calculation of where we're at in a city with tax increment financing. And kind of, so currently, right now, our total tax budget, we're not even at 3% yet of tax increment financing in terms of taxes across the city. Most cities are upwards of 5% to 15% across the metro area. So, we still have room for expansion in that role. What I use as criteria is what I've used for the past four years, and these are all professional companies. These are all companies that have, you know, used the strongest quality building materials, labor practices. You know, they've done some really good work, not only in Minnesota, but across the nation. And that's...
Thank you. Ms. Gully, the same question. I'll read it again. There's a lot there. Tax increment financing, or TIF, has been a controversial topic in the city of late. What criteria would or do you use to determine if it is appropriate to grant to a project? And how would this affect your decision on future developments?
So, you know, we already got into this in the last question. It's really no secret that, like, Councilmember John Justin, who I've worked closely with, I've been concerned about the Dominion Development Projects and the ROAS project. I've been concerned about the sizes and the length of the TIF, but I also want to say that I've been really concerned about particularly Dominion's human rights and labor record, which, contrary to what Councilmember Fernandez is saying, they have a strong record of not being great on labor issues. So, but I've been concerned about the size and the length of the TIF, which is a sort of jargony way of saying, like, that the developers will pay the same taxes on the sites for years after the sites have actually been developed, that they're paying right, that the sites are paying right now. I live a block from Signal Hills, so I want something there as much as anybody. But I find myself coming back to the question of who benefits and who decides. And what I've heard from our community and being out and talking to neighbors is that they're concerned that this isn't actually going to benefit the community and that they didn't feel heard on the issues that were really important around this project. And what I heard from our friends in the building trades, who actually had a vested interest in seeing this project go through, is that we were overpaying as a city and we were being taken advantage of. So, the resources that we're giving to Dominion and to ROAS and to other development companies are resources that we need in our community to, you know, build our roads, our bike trails, our sidewalks, and to build a much-needed community center, which I've heard from a lot of community members, is really a lifeline here in West St. Paul. We need a more holistic approach to these decisions, one that will ensure that when we're making the decisions that impact our whole community, that our community members are engaged. And that when we ask the question of who benefits and who decides, the answer is always us and our community.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, you've got an opportunity for a response.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, first of all, giving TIF to a developer and building a community center are two totally different things. Secondly, that's how development happens right now, especially with interest rates as low as they are, is that TIF is a crucial part and a critical part of getting things done. Okay, you know, I don't know how much longer that we wanted to sit with the former Kmart site in blight, in disarray. And, you know, I hear from residents the exact opposite, that people are happy that something is going to happen and be done. And you can't look around the metro area without seeing these type of developments happening with our tax increment financing. We also have a professional, you know, very heralded accounting firm, Ellers, that gave us, you know, had nothing but glowing reviews for this. So, I do disagree on that.
Ms. Gully, your final comment on the question.
I think I've said everything that I want to say about it, but thank you.
All right. We'll move on to question number three, and Ms. Gully, you'll go first. Here is the question. What specifically have you done or will you commit to doing, if elected personally, to reach out and build relationships involving runners, Black, Indigenous people of color, the LGBTQ community, and other marginalized groups in your ward and/or West St. Paul overall? How will you go about it?
Thank you. I come from a community organizing background, and I strongly believe in the mantra, "Nothing about us without us." We have a responsibility to engage our whole community and to create spaces that are fully inclusive. So, and I have a track record of reaching out. I like getting to know people and going out into the community. Over the last few months, I've gone to every single door in Ward II and plan to do it again before November 3rd. And you learn a lot about community members just by going out and talking to people about what their thoughts are, about what's great about our community and what they need in our community. So, I'm on my second round, and I leave my cellphone number and my email with everyone. I point it out to them so that they know to hold on to the flyer and that they can call me anytime they want. But when I'm elected, I'm going to use the tools that we have available to reach out to our community members regularly. Our city website is good, but could use some work on being multilingual. It's only in English at this point. But we could do a lot of work on social media, so I'd really like to see our city raising its profile using social media in really effective ways. I'd also like to have more, if we can get this back together after COVID, have more community meetings. I'm also interested in implementing a community survey where we ask people what they want to see in our community and think about ways that we can implement it. And, you know, ultimately, it comes down to the fact that as an organizer, I want to hear more voices all the time rather than less. I want to hear more about what we can do in our community, because I think that that's how we get to good answers about what our community needs.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. I'll repeat the question for you. It's, what specifically have you done or what will you commit to doing, if elected, to personally reach out, build relationships, and involve runners, Black, Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQ+ and other marginalized groups in your ward or West St. Paul overall? And how will you go about it?
The biggest job of a city council person is to create policy and through that policy, provide opportunity to its residents. And one of the things that I really want to start doing and earmarking funds for is a Human Rights Commission. And that brings people from various groups that you spoke of together in the context of the city and start talking about some of the things that are hindering their lives. And that's what we do as the city councils, is we look at our ordinances and various things and say, hey, what is working? What is not working? How do we build better relationships? How do we provide more opportunity? How do we have more of an imprint of you transposed on the city? And we'll talk about some of the steps that we're going to take a little bit later on with some of the questions. But that's what we have to do right now, is we have to actually set together a part where the city council with residents works together on something specifically. We have to actually start putting plan behind it and budgetary, you know, dollars behind that as well to get it off the ground.
All righty, an opportunity for a rebuttal, Ms. Gully.
Actually, I just wanted to add a little bit to what I said before. I talked about my organizing experience, but without talking about specific work that I've done as an organizer. So, I wanted to say that I spent five years knocking doors on marriage equality, so talking to people about how we improve LGBTQ civil rights and equal rights, literally statewide. I also have done, just in the last year, I've done a lot of voter registration work in apartment buildings here in West St. Paul. And I've also organized alongside people with disabilities, particularly on the home care organizing campaign, where we were, like, I was going out and talking to folks who work as PCAs. I also got to know a lot of folks with disabilities and got to work alongside them to improve wages for PCAs, so that they would have the support that they needed to be active in their communities. And I run a labor college, which involves everyone in sort of moving the movement forward. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Fernandez.
We can move on. I'm good.
All right. So, the fourth question, we'll start with you, Mr. Fernandez. It says, what creative ideas do you have on how West St. Paul can attract a more diverse business and minimize redundant businesses going forward? How can we be more proactive in encouraging individuals or companies to move or start those businesses in West St. Paul?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is a very complicated question, of course, because small business, large business, medium business is a market-driven opportunity. What we can do currently, which we're not doing the best job of, is working with our current business owners and providing, what I propose doing is a quarterly local issues meeting. And that has people from the business community, just residents as well. And then we throw other people in there from the SBA, from some of the different, you know, minority-owned business, LGBTQAI, you know, representatives from some of their business chapters. We bring them to the table, and this might, you know, spur something on. This might encourage others in our community to take that first step and become a small business owner. I myself am a small business owner. I stepped out on my own in 2012, and it's a very risky yet rewarding thing that I did. And I did that with some guidance from some of the people that I knew that were doing it as well. So, that's how you encourage things, is getting people together that want to see other entrepreneurs succeed. And, you know, we have such a diverse, so much diversity along Robert Street and throughout the city of business owners, where we need to bring them together, because other business owners like myself, and we want to see others succeed. It's a very important, it's a very important element. So, that would be one of the key things. Of course, we can't force people to open businesses in West St. Paul, of course, but we can sure provide them a lot of opportunities and tools. And we, as a city, can provide that tool chest and say, hey, look, if I did it, you can do it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Gully, I'll read the question one more time. It says, what creative ideas do you have on how West St. Paul can attract more diverse businesses and minimize redundant businesses going forward? How can we be more proactive and encouraging individuals or companies to move or to start businesses in West St. Paul?
So, we all know that COVID has been really hard on our businesses, and I hear this from community members all the time, that they see the vacancies on Robert Street and see that as a sign that we're letting our small businesses fail. But contrary to what some people think, we actually have a lot of thriving businesses here in West St. Paul, a lot more than we actually see all the time, because a lot of them are non-retail or are home or online-based. Right now, on my block, I have a baker, a music teacher, a florist, a personal researcher, and a dog walker. And those are the folks that I know about. I'm sure that there are others who I haven't met yet or don't know about their businesses yet. There's, well, relationships between government and the private sector sort of limit what we can actually do to change the businesses. And West St. Paul, there's a lot that we can do to make things better for businesses here. For example, there were small grants available for COVID relief here in West St. Paul for businesses, but my friend, who's a music teacher down the street from me, went through the whole process and then found out that home-based businesses didn't qualify. And so, I think that we could revisit that and see if we can find ways to support home-based businesses that didn't get COVID relief. But I think, like everything else, it starts with engaging the stakeholders and understanding who our businesses are and what they need to thrive in our community. So, I would like to see, I would like to see a small business committee where we invite people to come together and talk about the ways that we can really support our small businesses and diversify the small businesses that we have here in our community. And that particularly goes for, again, like, the home-based businesses, the online businesses, the food trucks that are actually based here, which tend to be really diverse. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, any other comments on this question?
I just wanted to add that that's exactly what a quarterly local issues meeting would do, is to bring those people together, but also bring them in the space of people that do run a larger business, because collectively, that's how people progress and move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any final thoughts, Ms. Gully?
I'm glad that we agree on that to some degree, and, you know, I think that my background as a community organizer will come in really in that way.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to question number five, and Ms. Gully, you'll speak first. So, there is a movement in a lot of cities to restructure their police budgets, such as redirecting some resources to community support rather than punitive enforcement. Do you think the city should change the way it approaches and funds law enforcement, and why?
So, I want to start by giving our West St. Paul police officers a lot of credit for their work. It's hard, it's stressful, and it's sometimes dangerous, and they don't know when it's going to be dangerous. I've seen our West St. Paul police officers handle really difficult situations with a lot of care and professionalism. And I've seen situations that could have gone very badly go a lot better than I expected them to go. And I think that that is because of our West St. Paul police officers. I also appreciate that I've seen them be proactive in building relationships with our community. For example, when we can have 19 nights, the West St. Paul police officers will go to every single registered block party. I think we had three different police cruisers that are 19 nights last time, and they were all really excited to share their work with our kids. Our kids were super excited to explore the police cruiser, try out the walkie-talkies, turn on the lights, of course. Relationships like this make an enormous difference. That being said, I also need to say that I've heard from some community members, particularly community members of color, that they don't feel the same level of security that my family feels. And I know from personal experience that when you have people who are experiencing mental health crises, that the police can often not be trained and equipped to really make the situation better. Although, I, again, have seen our police officers in West St. Paul do a good job with those situations. I'm committed to working with our community to learn what we can do better and to learning from other cities what we can do better with our police department and also with bringing city resources into, you know, having other kinds of support for our community members. But I also think that we need to work on this on a statewide level, and we need to get support from the state. But I also think that we need to work on this on a statewide level and we need to get support from the state to think about, outside of the box, about how we create community policing and community safety that's effective and safe for everyone.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fernandez, I'll read the question one more time. It says, there is a movement in a lot of cities to restructure their police budgets, such as redirecting some resources to community support rather than punitive enforcement. Do you think the city should change the way it approaches funding law enforcement and why?
No, I do not. Currently, we are cutting edge. The police department is cutting edge in some of the things that they're using. We've been written up in national papers about some of the things that we're doing when we're dealing with mental health crisis. We are, we, we, we have social workers that go out to some of the calls already. You know, these are some of the things that we're seeing national people talk about reallocating money from the police department. They're doing what we're starting to do. We're going to get better at that. I'm not saying that we're perfect. Because we certainly are not. But we're going to get a lot, we're going to get a lot better at that. But we're already, right now, we are the most overworked police department in Dakota County. Our officers go on more calls than any other police force in all of Dakota County. We deal with a set of issues that some of the other cities that share a county, share a dispatch, do not deal with. I believe that we have a police chief, we have sergeants, we have different people that are buying into a system. They're doing a great job of getting out in the community. Nobody's perfect. We're, we are not perfect. But we are, we are open to change. We're, we're, we're open to, to listening. And I'm very proud of our police department. You want to talk about surveying the community? For the past four years, the number one response from community members was how satisfied they are with their police department. I will, when we, when we, when Ms. Gully has a chance for rebuttal, I would like to know an exact answer from her. I did not get an answer. I heard some things, but will she, does she want to change the city's budget to accommodate some of the things that you spoke of? My answer is no. I do not want to switch the way that our police's budget is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gully, you've got a minute to respond.
Sure. I do not plan on changing the city's budget to change the police department, no. But I'm not on the council, so it hasn't come up in front of me either. So. But no, I don't, I don't expect to change the police's budget. I do think that we need more resources for mental health. And I'm, I, like I said, we had a hostage situation on our block last year and the police managed to de-escalate it and take the person into custody safely. And that, to me, deserves a huge amount of credit. But I still have personally had experiences with friends with mental health crises that our police haven't dealt with that well. And, you know, I think it's really important that we, and, you know, again, like, our police chief has changed in the last couple of years. But I think that there's, that there's always room for improvement and any time it's, you know, that we always need to think about how we do things on our.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, any final comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is something, having social worker psychologist on hand is something. But, but again, you know, that, that is something that long-term, it does need a budgetary change. Just, you know, for those playing at home. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to question number six. And, Mr. Fernandez, you'll answer first. It's very likely that there will be a decrease in state local government aid or LGA. How would you deal with a revenue shortfall? Would you increase taxes or would you cut programs?
Oh, I mean, that's, that's, that's the art of, of a lot of this stuff. You know, when, when, when there's nothing specific in front of me, that's why I believe and I, and I champion so much the development aspect of it. Because even when you're doing a tax increment finance deal, when you put a large development in a specific area, you know, that, that is spurring other, you know, developments around there. You know, and you can see it all throughout the city. So I would need something specific, you know, with, with, with the decrease in, in, in LGA and stuff. Is there going to have to be a probably a tweaking and a tuning to the, to the levy? Absolutely. You know, but it's really tough to say without something specifically in front of me. I don't want to run away from this question at all. But that is, you know, there, we're, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And that's why it's important to have continuity on the council and people that aren't afraid to make those tough decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Gully. I'll read the question again. It says, it's very likely that there will be a decrease in state and local aid or LGA. How would you deal with a revenue shortfall? Would you increase taxes or would you cut programs?
Like Councilmember Fernandez, I think it's really hard to look at this without anything in front of me and say, I would do this or I would do that. But I would say that we've already cut local government aid. And I would really push for, you know, and part of this is, I think, building relationships with our state representative and our state senator to try to push for increased local government aid to get back to the levels that we were at before Governor Templenti cut them way back. So I would build relationships on the state level and push to increase local government aid instead of seeing it cut.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, any follow-up response?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there, you know, there, there's no doubt that we're going to have to do more with less. And that's why I propose things like the quarterly, you know, local issues meeting is for that same aspect. Is that we have some very large organizations in our city that operate, that have a very large philanthropic arm. And we haven't really tapped into that resource yet. And we haven't, I think we can do a better job in, in raising money for certain things. Maybe that's park equipment. Maybe that's some of the smaller, smaller line item things that are on our budget that I, that I would hate to see get nipped away, that we can do, get a little bit more creative with. And maybe, maybe raise some funds with some of the partners that are in our community that, you know, have those branches that are existing. We just haven't done a good job of asking.
Ms. Gully, any other thoughts?
No, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to question number seven. Ms. Gully, you'll respond first. It says, recent polls show that public concerns about climate change is increasing. Describe some steps you feel the city could take or should take to become more environmentally sustainable and resilient.
So I actually saw our council push hard to get to medium development, to use the tip funding to do things that would have been environmentally friendly and to make the buildings really environmentally friendly. Unfortunately, they did it at the very, very, very last second, when there was pretty much no chance that any of that was going to happen. But I'd really like to see us push for when we're going to give government aid to, if we're going to give government aid to massive development companies to come to our community, then I think we really need to think about using that as an opportunity to get very environmentally friendly buildings and construction. We, we, you know, this is the most important issue of our generation, absolutely no doubt. I also would like us to do a, so we have a great environmental, excuse me if I get this wrong. I think it's the environmental committee here in West St. Paul. And they are always pushing for changes and really like on the, you know, doing great work. But we don't listen to, our council doesn't listen to them and hasn't done a great job of engaging them and actually giving them authority to make any kinds of changes. So I would really like to see us lean on them and their expertise and bring them into the conversation about how we can make our city more environmentally friendly and push our Green Cities Initiative work as well.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fernandez, again, the question is, recent polls show that public concern about climate change is increasing. Describe some steps you feel the city could and should take to become more environmentally sustainable and resilient.
The, the, the number one for me is just the walkability and the bikeability. What we've seen after the pandemic was, you know, more and more people on the streets. You know, after this all gets lifted, I hope, you know, I, I have a feeling that more and more people are going to probably be working from home. And, and so we need to have that, we need to provide that connectivity. We have public transportation. We have a, a, a large bus route that runs through. It's unfortunate that I see bus stops where people can't even walk on a sidewalk to safely get there, especially in the winter. You know, if we, if we, if you've got a bus running down Smith Avenue, you don't even have a sidewalk or a path to get there, something's broken with that. We did put solar panels on our city hall to address Ms. Gully's concern with developers, you know, using a little bit more stringent standards. I mean, unfortunately, right now, it's just, just financially not feasible. You know, I could, I could sit here and say that, you know, I'm going to demand every developer to do that. But I just don't know if that's financially accurate at this moment. I honestly don't. So, you know, hopefully we get there at some point. But what we can do as a city council right now is, is work on the white walkability, bikeability, connectivity throughout the city. I am curious, though, to ask Ms. Gully, what specific example she has of where the council didn't listen to the environmental committee? Because I, in my four years, I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember that. So. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Gully, your response.
Sure, of course. I appreciate the question. I've heard from members of the environmental committee that they don't feel like they've been listened to. I can't provide specific examples because I'm not on the environmental committee. But that's what I've heard, that they've proposed things and that they haven't gone anywhere and they haven't felt like their work has been taken seriously. I would just say to the, to the financial viability question, if not now, when? I mean, we're literally out of time to deal with climate change. So excuses about finances, like, we've got to figure it out somehow.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to question number eight. And the question is, West St. Paul has an active community of volunteers. What will you do as a county, a city council member to connect them with opportunities to improve the city?
I'm sorry, is that, is that to me?
Oh, yes, sir. That's to you. Sorry.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Um, you know, there, there's, there's a menagerie of things, right? You know, one of the, one of the reasons thing before the pandemic hit on me that I really wanted to do something with that was community, community-based driven was 1010 Dodd. We have a patch of grass that used to be a former AJ's garage site. And I thought, well, you know, what, what, what a better idea than to, you know, maybe put some planters up, do something decorative, artistic and whatnot. So unfortunately, with the pandemic, everybody is like, what's going on? And that didn't happen. But it's, it's identifying, you know, different things throughout the community like that and getting the right people that have the, the expertise and seeing what they can do. So that's, that's an important thing. And you just, you identify those going on. There's a, there's a lot of good work that people are doing right now. You know, there's like, we're actually starting to install artwork in the city, which is like, oh, mind blow, right? There's no art in the city. And, you know, I'd like to take that a step forward. I'd like to start to look at some of the, you know, I see all these, these buildings on Robert Street that to me are like blank, blank canvases, you know? We need to find our Diego Rivera or our, you know, our Banksy and put something, put some explosion on there, some life. We're a vibrant community, we're a diverse community. We have all these different things. And when you, when you go into, to, to West St. Paul, you don't, you don't feel that right away. I want to, I, I think it's important as the city goes forward to, to, I started identifying some of those areas and doing something about it. So, thank you.
Alright, Ms. Gully, I'll read the question again. It says, West St. Paul has active community volunteers. What will you do as a city council member to connect them with opportunities to improve the city?
We do have great volunteers here in West St. Paul. I want to give a shout out to the Green Thumbs who put together the cornerstone gardens in our parks. We have one right across the street from our house and it's beautiful. I've talked to a friend or to a couple of friends who are Green Thumbs, who have said that they're interested in doing more work in the community parks. And I would love for the city to support that. I think that would be really great and go a long way. I'd also love to see us, you know, supporting community gardens. I'd love to see us supporting more arts. And again, like a lot of this stuff, it, people are here, they're willing to do it. We have really like a lot of talent in our city. And it just takes like finding out who we have and what they're interested in contributing to the community. And I think we have to start by just having a conversation with our community. And whether it's engaging them on social media or by doing some kind of survey or through community meetings, we need to talk to folks about what they're, what they're actually interested and capable of doing. But one of the things that I've heard from neighbors a lot is that we need, you know, I've heard from a lot of senior neighbors who could really use help maintaining their houses so that they can stay in their homes. So that's something that's different than other things that have been mentioned that are all really important. But, but I think would be fantastic would be if we got together a group of people who are willing to help with like mowing lawns or, you know, painting garages or whatever, so that we can really support all of our neighbors staying in our community and being active and staying in their homes for as long as they want to. So those are some of the things that I would want to bring when I'm on the council.
Thank you. And I'll give Mr. Fernandez a moment here to respond. Before I do, I just want to remind both of you that the information you received, just you guys aren't supposed to ask each other questions directly. So I just wanted to remind you of that as we continue. No problem. Appreciate it. But go ahead with your response, sir. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted to dovetail on something that Robin said about the, you know, the paint and helping neighbors. That, that's, that's absolutely, that is something that gets overlooked all the time. And it would be really great to put together something where, where people could call into those that are maybe looking to help. I mean, a little paint, a little know-how of carpentry goes a long way. I will say, about a year ago, a little bit over a year, we did enact something where we're, we're starting to earmark earmark funds in the city budget that are for low to no interest loans for rehabbing. So a little bit, you know, beyond in terms of monetary-wise, besides what Ms. Gully's speaking of. But that completely makes sense. And that's actually something that is, you know, is really doable. And I think, I think about that all the time. I mean, I really do. I mean, there're just, there're so many people that, you know, just, just don't have that skillset. And it, it just, it goes a long way and it gives pride back to people, especially in a certain age range. And so it's a really good idea.
Ms. Gully, any other comments?
No, I just wanted to say, thank you. And I hope that whichever one of us that gets elected, that we'll be able to do that. Because I think it will make a big difference in our community. And I just wanted to add, I guess, one thing, which is that I've heard from a lot of folks who have gotten fix-it sort of tickets in the community who, for whom that would make a really big difference. And I've in fact heard of, from folks who are moving out of the community because they're just tired of feeling targeted all the time. But they don't really have the capacity to do the upkeep on their house. And when you look around, it's small things that probably take a weekend for a couple of folks to do, but would really make a big difference. So.
Alright, this is the last question before we move into the questions that we got from the chat today. So here's the question. And Ms. Gully, you'll go first. What is your opinion of West St. Paul's rental density ordinance?
So I've been out, so I was a renter for a really long time and I'm really empathetic to renters. And I also have been a homeowner in West St. Paul here for some years. And I, I, I just want to say that, like, I think that what we need to think about when it comes to renters is how we protect people and how we make sure that they're safe and secure in their homes. I've been out going to a lot of apartment buildings and engaging with residents. And some of our, we have a lot of apartment buildings and we're doing a lot more than I think people realize because they tend to be sort of clustered together. But a lot of them are in very poor condition. And I know that our city code and our city inspectors do, do a lot of really good work. But I, I think that we need to do more to make that we're engaging with renters and hearing from them. For example, when licensing is coming up again, you know, can we find out more about what the renters need in their building and if their buildings are being prepared in the way that they need to be?
Thank you. All right. I'll repeat the question for you. So the question is, in what is your opinion on West St. Paul's rental density ordinance?
Whoever put this question down, thank you so much. If this were the rental density ordinance, this is what would happen to it. Right here. See that? Boom, boom. It is the worst, absolute worst ordinance that is on the books right now in West St. Paul. It is draconian by its nature. It was started during the foreclosure crisis because people were scared that renters were going to creep into the single-family neighborhoods, right? Well, guess what? You know, you have more control as a city with the rental when you give them a rental license than you do a homeowner. So people need to realize that first. We had a situation over on 210 Logan where the city bought the property in Ward two. It was, it was, it was a blight to the city. It was a safety risk. The city stepped in, literally bought the property, got them out of there. You know, we wouldn't be able to do that unless we bought it because it was, it was an owner occupied property. So to, to think and to create this consternation between homeowners and renters is ridiculous. Some could say that there's other parts of, parts of it that are, you know, that, that are really, you know, racially motivated. There's all sorts of things. It needs to get redone. But also what we need to do with affordable housing and things like that is we need to look at our accessory dwellings in our properties. We need to start getting creative. We need to start looking at building, I'm from the west coast, I'm from California. And, uh, you know, you have, you have like the kind of, kind of in-law suites that are, that are built in backyards and things. We need to start looking at that. That's what we're doing. All, that's what's happening all around the country. I'm a, I'm a real estate broker. It's what I do for a trade. People are looking at this all around the country. How can we create our properties to be more familial based? We can, we can get more out of them. So the rental density ordinance is going to go bye-bye. Hopefully very soon.
Ms. Gully, any more thoughts from you?
No, I just want to say that I agree with the alternative dwelling unit conversation and that that's a really important conversation to be having. And yeah, thank you.
Mr. Fernandez?
I mean, can I top that? I mean, you know?
All righty, we will move on then to some of the questions from out of the chat. So the first question from out of the chat, it'll go to you, Mr. Fernandez. It says, list three items of concern specific to Ward two and what you will do about them specifically.
All right. Walkability, bikeability. You know, we just, we, we were just dealing with something on, on Moreland, a whole reconstruct, everything like that. You know, unfortunately staff didn't have, you know, bicycle lanes or anything. We're not going to have parking on one side of the street. We got to add like a bike lane in there, I believe. You know, that's a big thing. One of my big pet peeves too is over on the street that I use every day, which is Emerson. You know, we've got a city-owned hockey arena over there that people can't even walk to if they wanted to. It's a very, it's a very busy and dangerous road. That's one of them. The pool, we need to do something about the pool. That's number two. So we're on two right now. The two is, is the pool. You know, we, we need to, I think that we probably need to take that pool over. We need to do something about it. I don't want to lose that pool. That pool is, is a, is a great amenity. My daughter learned how to swim in that pool. Many kids use that in the summer programs when they can. And, uh, you know, and then just overall, number three would be, you know, our, you know, we're seeing a lot of damage and destruction in the parks. I, I don't like to see that. I don't know the specific answer behind that yet though, but we need to do that. So like a walkability, the pool and overall the parks, we need to, you know, just discourage the, the, some of the vandalism that we're seeing that is just, it, it eats away at, at budgets. And it, and it creates people to possibly feel unsafe and other things. So that's it. There's more, of course, but you asked for three, so.
Thank you. Ms. Gully, same question for you. What are three items that you're concerned about and what would you specifically do to address them?
So my answer is going to sound kind of similar, but I think I have sort of slightly different reasons. Walkability and bikeability is super important. I live in the same neighborhood where my middle school is. And I see kids, I mean, not during the pandemic, obviously. But I see kids walking to school all the time through the street. So making sure that our sidewalks are complete and safe and that people can use them. Making sure that they're accessible for folks who use mobility devices is incredibly important. And I've also heard from community members who walk on major streets that don't have enough streetlights. And so they don't feel comfortable going out and walking their dog down Annapolis, which is, uh, you know, on the, in the part that's 40 acres. That's completely ours because they don't have good streetlights. So during that, finishing our, of course, finishing the River to River Greenway, but making, we need bike paths and bike trails on our streets, especially our major streets where folks are biking all the time. It's really unsafe to bike down Charlton or Wentworth when we don't have bike paths. Affordable housing, making sure that it's not only affordable, but also that it's safe and secure and that the landlords are taking care of the properties. We have lots of good properties in here in West St. Paul Ward two, but we also have a lot that are in really poor shape and where the buildings are not secure, where they smell because they don't seem like the carpet's been changed in thirty years. Where it doesn't look like there's been paint in decades. And then our parks and our public spaces, they're incredibly important, especially coming to the other side of this COVID pandemic. We really need to think about not just having those spaces, but how we get, especially the folks who have been really isolated out and into them. So thinking about community gardens, thinking about art projects, public art projects, thinking about ways that we can engage folks. Thinking about how can we get state funding to build a new community center. Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one thing too, that I think a lot of people in the community overlook. That was passed roughly about over a year ago or a year or something like that. But that's where we're starting to, to tax paths and sidewalks, not just a hundred percent on the homeowner. So if you have twenty feet of sidewalk in front of your, your house, you're not just being taxed on your share of that. But that taxes is being taxed throughout the entire city. And what that does is it really lightens the burden on that specific homeowner. And it makes it so there's not as much consternation when we are starting to put in some of this infrastructure. And we're actually starting to earmark and, and, and put, put, allocate certain amounts of money into pathways and, and walkways. And also with these bigger developments, we have parkland dedication funds. And that's a huge part of, of keeping our parks, you know, safe and keeping them up to date, up to speed with different things. I'd really like to see a pickleball court somewhere in the community as well. It's the fastest growing sport in the world. You know, and, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Gully.
I just want to say that I totally agree with treating sidewalks as a citywide accessibility issue. And I don't know why we haven't done that so far. It comes down to homeowners a lot of the time and whether or not they're willing to petition their neighbors to get sidewalks complete. And that is not, is not acceptable for a city to treat it as a citywide accessibility issue. And I realize that we also need to think about how we keep our property taxes manageable, especially for our seniors when we want to keep them in their homes as long as they want to stay in their homes. But I think that this is a really important conversation to have, that it deeply affects the livability of our community.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next question, which is, when West St. Paul was trying to get funding for Robert Street, a few council members went to the Capitol several times. Others did not do anything. If a funding issue comes up like this again, would you lobby at the Capitol? If so, why do you think it's important? If not, why not? So Ms. Gully, we'll start with you.
Yes, absolutely. I think it's incredibly important that we build relationships with our state and local, with our state representatives. And make sure that we're engaging them in these conversations. And I would be done at the Capitol all the time. And in fact, uh, what, last year and the year before, when Representative Rick Hansen was trying to get funding to pay for some of that Robert Street debt, I actually was at the Capitol for several hearings and did testify on behalf of the city of West St. Paul for that exact reason. I think it's really important.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. I'll repeat the question for you. When West St. Paul was trying to get funding for Robert Street, a few council members went to the Capitol several times. Others did not do anything. If a funding issue like this comes up again, would you lobby at the Capitol? If so, why? Do you think it's important? If not, why not?
Just because somebody doesn't go to the Capitol and physically sit there, doesn't mean that they're not doing anything, first of all. Secondly, you know, the, the people that did go down there, you know, they were a little bit better, possibly suited to, to go down there and do that. So it's really about, you know, timing and, and, you know, for, for an entire city council to, to go down there. I don't know if that's the best allocation of resources to, to specifically do that. You know, but I, I think it's obviously important, you know, whatever we can get from the, from the state government is, is very important. But, you know, just, just because you don't go down there specifically, doesn't mean that you're not doing other things within your own network to try to obtain financing.
Ms. Gully, any other comments?
I just want to say that I, I hear what you're saying about allocation of resources, council member Fernandez. And, um, but it was really important that we had people down at the Capitol for those hearings. And I went to a number of them and we didn't have a ton of people from West St. Paul show up and that really made a difference. And I think it might've been part of the reason that, probably was part of the reason that we didn't get the funding that we wanted from the state government. So, you know, respectfully disagree.
That's very speculative, but okay.
All righty, we'll move on to our next question. So Mr. Fernandez, you'll go first. It says, one moment, sorry, my, okay, here we go. Sorry, sir. So it says, to the public, it seems that staff presents their positions on agenda items and council frequently accepts their recommendations without much public discussion. However, staff are not elected officials. Explain your position on what weight should be given to staff recommendations. And would you, or have you questioned their recommendation?
Well, if you go throughout the four years of the city council, you're going to see, you know, a, a lot of that. I mean, there's, there's going to be, I've, I've questioned staff on various things. It's not always in the public eye as well. You know, various council members are calling staff about certain things, you know? You know, we get our, we get our, our packets on certain things on a, on a Friday and then there's a weekend, then there's Monday. And Monday is a busy day of, of checking in on things, asking things. You know, like what we're starting to see now is what we started to do is televise our open council work session, which was very important, which is very, something that was important to me that I wanted to have all along, because that's where we really, you know, make a lot of the decisions. And, or not, I shouldn't say make a lot of the decisions, but we give, we give staff a lot of, we want them to, to, to go with a, with a product, the development with a rewriting of, of an ordinance, whatever it may be. So staff is questioned all the time. We do have a very professional staff. We do have an amazing city manager who is very open and has a very open door policy on a lot of different things. So.
Thank you. Ms. Gully?
Um, I'm a passionate person. I question everybody about everything. So I don't think it's any question that I will, you know, ask tough. I'll ask tough questions.
I'm on a very important thing.
I'll ask tough questions when they need to be asked. But I also think that it's really important that we hire the right city staff and we feel like they are the people that we can depend on to do a great job. And, um, so I think that that's something that I would consider, um, you know, an important task of being on the council. And as a council member, I think our particular job is really getting community feedback and knowing who, what our constituents are saying and what concerns they have and engaging the city staff on answering those questions and really addressing them as we go forward.
Mr. Fernandez?
Sorry, I just got distracted. My daughter just came over from her friend's house. Um, uh, yeah, staff, I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing. But again, you know, they, they, we're, we're not, we're not full-time employees. They're, they're all very seasoned. I mean, most, uh, you know, very professional staff and, and sometimes they, they make the wrong decision and they're, we let them know of it. I don't know what else to say about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gully?
No, I think I said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. The next question's for you, Ms. Gully, out of the chat. It says, what actions would you take to bring more art to West St. Paul?
Um, I think I responded to that a little bit, but one of the things that I really think that we could do is sort of learning who our artists are in West St. Paul. I know of quite a few who are really interested in getting involved with community art. And then, um, being ready with the supplies and the materials. And I think that that's something that we should have city support for, frankly. I also think that we have a lot of folks who are interested in community gardens. And I'd really like us to look at how we can get community gardens like they have in Minneapolis, here in West St. Paul. And it's not, I mean, art of gardening, I guess. But I think that it's a really powerful way to bring people together and to make our community better and look better and more livable for everyone. So, you know, I think just engaging people and then having the resources available to support them is really important.
Mr. Fernandez, what actions would you take to bring more art to West St. Paul?
You know, uh, one of the things that I kind of talked about before was some of these blank, blank walls. And, um, you know, some of these businesses that have them, I'd like to approach some of these business owners and see what they felt about a mural. And, and try to, you know, reach out with somebody, hopefully within the community and, and do something to spruce things up. There's, there's, there's all different various methods of it. I'd be curious, there's an organization that I worked with when I was in Frogtown called Springboard for the Arts. And they've got some different things that they can do in terms of, you know, helping raise money for different things. It really has to be kind of a, from the ground up led type situation. You know, we saw something over at, on the corner of Oakdale and Butler at the Art Park, and that's kind of a prime example of it. But I, I would like to look, look beyond all of that stuff. And, you know, what I, what my idea kind of was, or, you know, 1010 Dodd was planter boxes and maybe some mosaics around that. And just to brighten my little bit of jazz and, you know, spruce things up. But really, we're missing like a mural. You know, we're hoping to have kind of an art installment on the northern gateway as you come in with the Dakota County CDA building. So hopefully we can start getting some stuff there. But it's, it's needed. I mean, it's, it's, it's really needed. We have this kind of kitschy, unique community where you're crossing this like odd art deco-y 50s, 60s mod and transposing it with some, you know, quirky 80s. And, you know, we've got to, we've got to accentuate that. We've got a, we've got a vibe here. We just need to sink in and just kind of, yeah, that's. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gully, any other comments on the question about art? You're muted.
Sorry. I love the idea of having more murals here in West St. Paul. And I actually have a good friend who's an associate director at Springboard for the Arts. But I think that, you know, engaging art organizations is a really good idea. And I'd love to see an art organization here in West St. Paul too, so.
Mr. Fernandez, any other thoughts?
No, thank you.
Okay. So last question before we go to closing comments for the evening. What do you believe West St. Paul has to offer that our neighboring communities do not? And how do you or would you promote that?
Does that mean? Okay. Uh, well, we have, you know, we're, we're more diverse than, than, you know, like if we're talking about Dakota County specific, our diversity is, is fantastic. And, you know, as I talked about before, a Human Rights Commission is a way that we start to work at, on a system-wide approach within the city. How we, how we channel the right resources into the right spot so we can accentuate upon that. We also have affordability and that's why. We also have affordability, and that's why we're seeing that there's, you know, our, the houses that are being put on the market currently are are being swallowed up pretty quickly because, you know, organically, the affordability is is in West St. Paul. How we keep this sustainable is we need to add the infrastructure in there. We need to add the sidewalks in the pass. You know, one of the cities that I compare us a lot to, and if you watch some of the council meetings, is the city of Ridgefield. You know, the city of Ridgefield has done a fantastic job of connecting their city and, you know, but but still having, still providing affordable options, still building, you know, affordable housing units and making it all work. You know, our diversity is something that, you know, people shouldn't shy away from, but embrace. And I want to continue to do that. And I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Ms. Gully, the question is, what do you believe West St. Paul has to offer that our neighboring communities do not? And how do you or would you promote that?
I just want to sort of agree. We have affordable housing and affordable homes, which is really sort of unique in the metro area. We have a super diverse community, and our community is really interested in helping each other. When I have an issue with my car, I get stuck in the snow, I always have neighbors who run outside to help and make sure that I get on my way. You know, my neighbor Dan, every Christmas, makes sure that if anyone needs help hauling away their Christmas tree with his truck, he's always there to help them get it. But how to promote it, I kind of like that we're a bit of a hidden secret here in the metro area. In all seriousness, though, we could just do a lot of work with our social media. So, for example, in Minneapolis, they have a hashtag #bragMinneapolis. I think we could do a lot with like hashtag brag West St. Paul, although certainly I think we could be more creative and do something unique. But I think we could also highlight the way that our neighbors are helping each other and really promoting great community. And that's what I would do as a city council member. And, you know, just want to work to make our community really great and to let everybody know about it. Those are my children upstairs pounding like elephants on the floor.
Thank you. So we've just got a few minutes left, so I want to give you both an opportunity to make your closing remarks. And since Mr. Fernandez went first in the opening remarks, I'll have you, Ms. Gully, go first in the closing remarks, so you've got three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to start by once again saying thank you to Tori for your timekeeping. Thank you to Ben for being a great moderator. Thank you to the women of West St. Paul, to the residents of Color Collective, and to the West St. Paul Greenway Coalition for pulling this together. This has been a really great forum, and I really appreciate everyone coming and being part of it. And I appreciate Councilmember Fernandez for being part of it as well. If I'm lucky enough to be elected to city council, I will use my position to work to make our city more livable and accessible for everyone who is here. And I want to do that by engaging our community really deeply in questions about how we make our city more accessible and livable for everyone and how we make those kinds of tough choices about how we can afford things and what we need, but also engage the community in conversations about how we think outside the box about ways that we can use the resources and spread the resources that we have so that they go a long way. I want to work to make our city more beautiful. I want to bring art, more art to the city, community gardens, improve our public spaces so that as we come to the other side of COVID, we're living our best lives in the city and really like bringing people out of their homes again and giving them lots of opportunities to connect with their neighbors and figure out how to be social again. I will be honored if I have the opportunity to sort of visit West St. Paul Ward 2 city council person. And I just want to say thank you again to everyone for caring enough about your city to come and participate in this process. And you can reach out to me again anytime. I'll put my phone number in the chat, but it's 612-558-6019. That's my cell phone number, and I make a rule of answering it. And you can also find out more about my campaign at robinforwsp.com. That's four spelled out, R-O-B-Y-N-F-O-R-W-S-P.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, your closing comments?
Excellent. Again, many thanks for this forum. It's a great, had a great time, had fun. Thank you to Ms. Gully, you know, virtual handshake here. And, you know, what else can I say? I think that continuity is important. I think that policy is important. I think policy is how you give residents the opportunity to to do things, to be able to. Again, the government's job is to give, hopefully give some residents some tools that they didn't have and provide safety for their for their community members. I think that my record has shown that I that I've done that. I feel that, again, we have a lot going on in West St. Paul. We need to keep that momentum forward. We need people with experience, not only in municipal government, but also in the private sector to continue to move this city forward. I don't know what else to say. Have a good night and safe travels.
We've reached the end of the forum, and I want to thank all the candidates for joining us here today and sharing your vision and opinions with the citizens of West St. Paul. I also want to give a sincere thank you to our volunteers from Women of the West St. Paul, residents of Color Collaborative, and West St. Paul Greenway Project, who put time to create and host this event. Thank you very much. I want to challenge you all to act. Never is an election more in your hands than a local election. So vote early or vote on Election Day. Write a letter to an editor. Talk to your local officials. Reach out to candidates. Ask questions, volunteer, or talk with your neighbors. The elections is November 3rd, but early voting is open now. You can vote by mail or in person at the Dakota County Service Center. For more information, go to www.sos.state.mine.us/elections-voting. I invite you to stay, I invite you to contact any of the candidates for more information. Stay healthy, and thank you so much for tuning in.